Hello, welcome to the City Council's March 16th Special Joint City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal state and local emergency. With that, I will go into roll call. My name is Drew Combs. I'm mayor of Menlo Park for 2021. I'd like to introduce Menlo Park staff and city council members present. Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Ray Mueller, Cecilia Taylor and Jen Wilson. Staff present include city manager Starla Jerome Robinson, city attorney Nara Doherty and city clerk Judy Heron. I'd also like to introduce Menlo Park Fire Protection District staff and board members. They include Director President Jim McLaughlin, Director Vice President Chuck Bernstein, Directors Virginia Chan Corrali, Robert Jones and Robert Solano. District staff present include Fire Chief Harold Shapleholman, Administrative Services Manager Kathleen Jackson, General Counsel Stephen Miller and Clerk of the Board Michelle Conyer. With that, City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instruction to the City Council members and members from the Menlo Park Fire Protection District and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And again, just echoing the welcome to today's special joint meeting with the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. Special thank you to the board and the board staff for helping us coordinate this meeting. At this time, we ask that all members of the City Council as well as the board remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones when responding to city council or board members' questions. For members of the public who wish to speak on an item on today's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to speak, I ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine and that will also raise your virtual hand. And that does conclude my introductions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll go to regular business. We have three regular business items. And again, there's lots of things of which the district and the city need to discuss. Certainly a lot more than three, but in an effort to, you know, hone this meeting and make it productive, we narrowed it down to three items, which are again listed under regular business. So under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. For C1, under regular business is a purchase of city property by the Fire Protection District. There are at least a couple of parcels of which there have been engagement between the Fire Protection District and the city, which the city has ownership to. One is the property on Choco, which is currently being used as a fire station and of which the Fire District has possession of under a long-term lease, but which is owned by the city. The other parcel is a Willow parcel that was recently purchased, somewhat recently purchased by the city from Mid Penn and of which the Fire District has at least had some interest in. And so those are again, the two primary pieces of parcel of which there has been engagement between the city and the Fire Protection District on. Before we take it to the virtual dais for discussion, I want to go to public comment. And so with that, I'll bring the city clerk back on to call for a public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item C1, which is purchase of city property by district, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a cellphone or a landline, please press star nine at this time. This will be the final call for public comment on item C1. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And just a real quick correction on my part. I did not introduce the police chief from Menlo Park, who is also joining us. Chief David Norris. So again, again, welcome. And he is also participating in this meeting. With that, I'll turn it to my colleagues at the Fire Protection District and on the City Council regarding these, you know, the issues surrounding possible transfers of property. Again, I know the Choco property has been ongoing years-long discussion between the city and the Fire Protection District. And again, the discussions surrounding the Willow parcel obviously are more recent. But I'm again happy to kick off this discussion and go to someone who who has a very clear indefinite opinion on what they think should happen with regards to these potential transactions. With that, I'll go to President McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. The district has occupied that site for many years now. And as you pointed out, we have a fire station there, but there's other facilities as well. It's our vehicle repair facility is located there. And our water rescue resources are also located there. There's a classroom and there's actually a rail siding that traverses the property as well. Actually, traversing is a misstatement where the dead ends there, you know, for if anything ever happens with the Dunbarton Bridge project, that would be a valuable asset. You know, we've, the district has expressed an interest in the past in purchasing the property. We, I think our interest is primarily driven by what we're considering improvements to the property, you know, in an effort to improve the quality of service that we provide to the community. And it's, you know, the issue of property ownership overhangs that. You know, we leased the property now and I believe we only recently restarted the clock in a 50-year lease. So that's a, it's a long time horizon, but you know, some of the improvements that we contemplate extend well into that period. I would point out that Station 4 that we're just now replacing has been there 70 years. So I think the district has a good track record of making maximum use of the facilities that we, that we own and operate. So that drives our interest in the property. I know there have been negotiations, negotiations maybe in this statement. There have been approachments in the past. The board has expressed an interest in renewing that exploration with the city. You know, is that something that the city would contemplate? And you know, then there's always the, you know, terms and conditions that would, that would accompany that. But you know, we are, we are interested in engaging with the city and seeing what's possible with regard to that Station 77 property. So thank you.
Yeah, I know. Thanks for those comments and sort of framing that and for, you know, specifying obviously that there's more there than the station. I think sort of one of the questions on the city side and not to speak conclusively from my colleagues who will certainly chime in is some sense of understanding of what are the long-term plans? Again, you mentioned that lots of things are happening currently on that site beyond just the general, again, with any public entity, certainly in this area. There should be a huge reluctance to sell property. Because if history suggests anything, it is that property values here only go up exponentially. And you could find yourself as school districts obviously have in our area in a really not great predicament if at some point and sometimes many decades later, right, that that property could have some value. So I think for us, beyond that, that initial hesitation, I think there's also some desire to understand more clearly, like what are the long-term plans for the site? How that sort of ties into possibly other sites? And what's a way of which the district might go about engaging the community, right? On this, it is a site that's somewhat buried in the neighborhood. And so there's, again, I think sensitivities there that might not exist with regards to some other sites.
You know, on the subject of future use, perhaps Chief Shapleholman, he's better positioned to describe what's there now and how that site will provide a base for the district to provide services really to the entire district. It's located in a neighborhood, but again, some of those facilities would benefit the entire district.
Yeah, happy to do it, Director. So, you know, council members and mayor, you know, this is a, you know, critical facility for us. And I was around when we, you know, worked through the agreement initially to put that station there. You know, to put it in context, Fire Station 1 on Middlefield Road and responding down Willow used to be the primary station responded in Bell Haven. Clearly, that wouldn't work today. And would have been really problematic over the years when congestion became even worse with traffic. And we've seen a little bit of lightning in that. Got a new overpass there, but you know, just the delay in response to the Bell Haven area would be pretty, pretty significant if that wasn't, that station wasn't there. And that was a joint effort between the Fire District and the city. I think it was a great undertaking in terms of a partnership that we had at the time. Subsequently, we have, you know, we've entered into another partnership with the rail folks and they built the $250,000 rail spur into the site that they didn't have to pay for, but they did. And that was on anticipation that someday the Dunbarton Rail System would be put back in place in some, you know, way or configuration. I know the city doesn't want to sell land. I would say probably the district would say the same thing. But you know, where this whole conversation started, just for some perspective, is when the city sold the rear property to the private school. And so that, that became a topic at that point. Where we would go in the future with the site, even if we were to come to agreement or were to build a facility, as we were discussing on Willow Road, we still don't have another place to put fleet services. We still don't have as good a launch point for any type of rail line response in the future. And we certainly don't have another facility currently for our water rescue operations. And if you don't know, the majority of our water rescue operations in the bay are actually in the city of Menlo Park. In the 50s, Menlo Park decided that they didn't want ships parked out near the Dunbarton Bridge. So you annexed into the bay. Most people don't know that, but you know, that's your area. And that's an area that we obviously provide service to as well. So the city of Menlo Park doesn't just incorporate, you know, landmass. It incorporates that Baylands area and the channel and so forth, all the way truly to the middle of the bay. And you can see the sign on the Dunbarton Bridge. It's not just a placeholder. It's real. So you know, the water rescue facility that we have there and the airboats that operate and come out of that site provide service directly to areas that are within the city. So that's critical infrastructure, critical facilities for us. And again, even down the road, if we were to move, that would still be necessary to be located somewhere. You know, I know we talked about the neighborhood and certainly we respond into the neighborhood that way. But if you look at it really, when we put that station there, it was at the edge of M2, right? And you know, one, you know, one building into the residential area. So we're literally where we are, I think, is in a good location, not only for response into M2. Now a lot of it Facebook, but equally, you know, at nighttime and other times in the residential neighborhoods. So our response times in there are very, very good. And you know, I know some people don't like the fact that we have to respond into the neighborhoods there, but you know, no different than law enforcement. I mean, we have a specific purpose. So, you know, we try and have our units come in off of the bayfront side of Chico. It's a little bit easier for them to come in and not go through the neighborhoods all the time, unless it's those units themselves. But you know, those are critical resources for us and for deployment. As you are well aware, that area has grown significantly. And so one of the reasons that, you know, this is even comes up is because the station was built for what Menlo Park used to be. You had a three-story cap on height and your floor area ratio was much different than it is today. So the massive amount of development that's going on and probably will continue to go on at some point. And the whole change out of the M2, that station was built to hold really a single engine company with four bedrooms and a small day room and a small kitchen area. And it isn't, it wouldn't, you know, it's too small for what we would want, quite honestly, going into the future. But you know, as Director McLaughlin said, you know, just started construction on Station 4 up at Alamina Valparaiso, which serves, you know, the upper portions, Sharon Heights and Menlo Park. Next in line behind that is 300 Middlefield Road, Station 1. And then this station, more than likely, you know, I don't, you'll have to reassess as time goes along, presumably be down the road behind that or another location. I mean, you know, it just isn't large enough to house what we even have now. In fact, increasing the size of the shop facility, enclosed the largest ladder trucks that we have now. We can't accommodate that. So we're looking at making that larger. And then the number of bedrooms at the station, because of four, we actually run two units. And because of COVID and we purchased the home next door, so talk about having skin in the game. You know, we own the house next door to the firehouse. And right now we have our Rescue 77 personnel living in there because we can't put them into a singular bedroom because of COVID. So we've already got impacts to how we operate, literally with our personnel living in the house because we can't put them in the station because it's too small for running two units, despite the fact that we need both units out of that station. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of a synopsis of where we've been, where we are, and hopefully where we're going to be going.
Yeah. And so just following up on that, Chief, thanks for that background info. Like what, what then, since it seems as though this with regards to sort of fire services and a new station in the Bell Haven area, it's third. And so then what's, what's the timeline then? Would you guesstimate that we're looking at?
From a remodel standpoint, we're working on that right now. You know, which is obviously not ideal if you're the district because, you know, we're sinking money into, into the facility. I mean, Station 1, Station 4 is underway. Station 1 would be next. I know that, you know, there's more discussions going to happen on that. I think you're even interested on that as well for certain things, although it's not on the agenda tonight. And then after that, again, you know, who knows at the time, but more than likely 77. 77 is an undersized station, I guess is the best point for the growth, the size, you know, I don't think anybody ever envisioned, you know, the hotels, the residential that we have within that first-in area. So having a large enough force working out of that, that facility based upon growth and population within M2. Even what was proposed, as you know, for Facebook, which may or may not happen, who knows when that will occur. But you know, we never thought we'd see residential growth on Haven, the way that we have in a commercial zone. We never thought we'd see it in M2. Never thought I'd see a school in M2. Those are kind of inconsistent things that in the past would not have happened, but they have happened. So again, the number of units, we can't even support the number of units that we currently have. So a timeline, you know, as a guesstimate, I would say within the next, and you know, again, this is guesstimate within the next eight to 10 years, but the remodel aspects that we have to do are current. Those are real. We can't fit the trucks in the fleet facilities, repair facility. So we need to increase the size of the Butler Building and we can't fit the firefighters currently in the building that we have. So we're going to have to do some sort of remodel there. I mean, ideally that, you know, we would be rebuilding a facility, but you know, Station 1 was built in 1955. As Director McLaughlin said, Station 4 was over 70 years old. So there's pre-existing older structures that we have to get to first.
Thanks. Anyone from the district or the council member Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And just to follow up, Chief Shapleholman, what are the, the average number of calls from Station 77 that you have on a daily basis?
So we're running, I haven't looked at the average per day, but you're running about 1,000 calls out of there a year. And Rescue 77 is a, is a, what we call a plus one unit. It's a smaller two-person pump and roll, smaller extrication package, and it's usually first up on the Dunbarton Bridge, if we can do it, because you have to leave the district and go into Fremont. It's the unit, the homeless encampments that can pump and roll. It tries, we try and use it for all code, we call code two medicals or non-life-threatening medicals. But equally, you know, it's a plus one on calls that we have, whether it's in 77 or 2's area for shootings or where we're going to need an additional unit. So smaller fires and so forth. So that's going to change the profile of what we're using that unit for. And that, what that does for us is it preserves that engine company in District 77 or Bell Haven. So that engine, you know, in terms of our reliability, which is kind of the key word, it means that we're always going to have a unit in Bell Haven available for, you know, a second or third level call that comes in. So about 1,000 a year right now.
And sort of following, Chief, you had mentioned that, so there are innovations happening now with regards to Station 77. So give me some sense of what are those future, when you're looking at that sort of eight-year time horizon? What are the scenarios that you see? So one obviously could be that the city at some point decides to sell the district, the land, and then that resolves that you guys own it and you can do whatever zoning and your engagement with the community allows. That's one alternative. Another alternative, of course, is that for whatever reason, the city decides it doesn't want to dispose of the property in that way and would prefer to continue with the long-term lease arrangement. How does the district's stance change or evolve based on that future scenario?
So yeah, I think the best way, and I use the term skin in the game, I think the best indicator for you that we were serious about, you know, that station is we could not build a station equal to what we're building at Station 4 or what we've built at Station 2, which is kind of our model, which, you know, we didn't get to do in downtown Menlo Park. We just couldn't get the property. So we had to modify what we, what we wanted, but you know, we're really trying to build all three bay, meaning three apparatus bays, large enough to hold our biggest piece of equipment, which is a tiller ladder truck and two-story for, you know, adequate crew quarters in addition to what, you know, what we think we would need into the future. So some planning ahead for the number of bedrooms and enough firefighters to fill out, you know, if you fill all three bays. So that house that you see is really the space that we needed to build a three-bay fire station. So what the district did is we purchased that house and that lot really in anticipation of building a three-bay drive-through two-story fire station to replace the one that we have there. And you know, again, we're looking ahead. That's a strategic purchase for us, a strategic acquisition. As you may recall, the community wasn't exactly too wild about some of the things that were happening over there. And ironically, you know, I was contacted by members of the community who brought to our attention that that home was for sale and there would be some desire to sell it to the Fire District and support for that, which we did get. And so, you know, what we heard at that time was, you know, A, you know, yeah, we don't want you to buy a lot, you know, on terminal and put it access to the rear of the building, but we would be open to if the station had to grow in its size so that it could support, you know, enough resources to respond and into the community as well as the M2, that that would allow us to build a big enough facility for that to happen. So that's why we purchased that house. Clearly, you know, hopefully as an indicator to the city, it shows, you know, that we're serious about, you know, eventually being able to build a large enough facility to address all the growth that we've seen, primarily in M2, but also, you know, understanding that, you know, Bell Haven is our primary response area there for that firehouse.
And then give me some sense of the Fire District's interest in the property on Willow. Like how, what then is, is the, the parcel recently sort of acquired or somewhat recently acquired from Mid Penn Housing by the city? Which on the city's part was, was a sort of an opportunistic transaction. How does that play? What is, if again, is, is just so we're certain, because there's been sort of multiple lines of communication on this. Is it, can we say affirmatively that the district still has interest in that, that, that property? And if so, what is, you know, sort of what are the plans for that property?
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. I think, you know, part of that, I'd have to, you know, go back to the board. I don't want to speak on behalf of the board in terms of, you know, overall interest. I will say that, you know, the interest has diminished somewhat simply because of, you know, what's happened with the economy. You know, the slowdown and maybe a different posture that we're going to see with Facebook and the Willow Road campus. And quite honestly, you know, the city had, you know, when you purchased that back and and ended up in an arrangement with the folks that are doing housing, there's, I know at least a three-year agreement. I don't know if they're delayed in what they were going to build, but you know, that made that somewhat less desirable. Certainly the easement issues that we've started to look into or did look into made it less desirable. I mean, that, there's, that facility could be a three-bay drive-through two-story station. It would be very tight as we realized, because we did bring an architect in to do some preliminary work on that. But you know, as I've told the board, I think we've been consistent on this. We would still need the 77 site because, you know, that, that lot would not support, you know, fleet services, water rescue and all the other things that we need to do. And talking and working with the Dunbarton Rail folks, I don't think we want to lose a rail spur, given the fact that that gives us good access right onto the main line, especially you know, they ever end up completing that project, I think as a public safety entity, having access on the line is a good thing for both them and the community and just safety in general. It's certainly something that, you know, makes sense to us. So, you know, that's, there's a, there would be an opportunity to do both. But I think right now, you know, that opportunity doesn't look as good as it used to, just because of where we are. And I think that's why, you know, as we've said, we'd rather focus on the 77 site. Got a long history of being there over 20 some odd years. You know, Director McLaughlin, I think hit it right in the nailhead. We don't plan on going anywhere. We're kind of long-term entities within any one of the communities or stations that we have. We typically try to rebuild in place. And we've done that at Station 2. We've done that at Station 6 and now we're doing it at Station 4. So I mean, we have the same plans for Fire Station 1 as we would have for Station 77. If you were to say, you know, we'll sell you the land. One caveat, just from a legal perspective is, and to alleviate some of the concerns about, you know, ownership, was that, you know, I think there could be a first right of refusal clause put in whatever agreement. So if the district ever did sell the land, you know, the city would be, you know, able to have first right of refusal to repurchase it at market rate. So, you know, again, I don't anticipate that would happen, but who knows? And you know, if that makes you feel better, there's a caveat you can put into an agreement like that. I'm not a lawyer, but that's what the lawyers are full of.
Thanks for that, Director McLaughlin.
You know, I would just point out, you know, I think our interest in, in the 77, the Choco site is is solid, you know, that, you know, we have an operation there, you know, we foresee having one there for many decades to come. The other site, you know, becomes less clear for the, you know, items or the reasons that the chief cited. You know, we do a periodic review of where we locate stations, you know, it's one of the, really, it's kind of, it's one of those unseen things that happens in the background. But you know, the chief commissions a study every few years and we evaluate, you know, do we have facilities in the right places, given growth patterns? You know, it's a very dynamic environment, especially You know, it's a very dynamic environment, especially of late, with all the growth, and especially all the growth east of Highway 101. So it's, there is a science to it. It's much more involved than I realize, you know, at the outset. You know, that site, the Willow Road site, you know, could be the right site for us. But again, it's a dynamic environment. That might, that might change. And there are some of the, there are some restrictions on using that particular site that we'd have to take into consideration. So the main point I want to make is our interest in 77 is pretty clear. On 88, it becomes more conditional, but as the chief pointed out, rightfully, the, you know, a first right of refusal clause, I think, could be put in place that if the city were so inclined to sell the property, it would be assured that it would be used for that purpose and if something, if that were to change, it would come back. So thank you.
Well, thanks for those, those comments. Again, I think one of the concerns, again, that I've heard, obviously, is just about a reticent to sell property, which we've discussed. And certainly, a first right of refusal helps with that. I think some sense of, also some clause related to sort of valuations would also probably help with that. So that where the sky wouldn't be the limit. But I think the other thing that I've heard some concern about is a sense of like, is this something that the community is supportive of and sort of bought into? And so, you know, my question would be the extent to which, you know, the fire district is willing. Again, I'm only speaking for myself. And so, would be willing to engage into a process by which it was quite clear that there was community support? Because I think that that has been a bit of an X-factor. Some of it came, came to the surface in connection with the proposal regarding the terminal property, right? And so, and so there is a sense, I think, and concern for, on the city side, that, you know, what the fire district has in mind is something that there's true, true support for. And I think that there would be probably a desire to see that in some way. Exactly how I don't, I couldn't say, but certainly to see that that was there. Happy to defer to any of my, or Chuck, were you raising your hand? Feel free to, Director Brimson.
Yes, thank you. I was raising my hand in the old analog way and not electronically. I apologize. I just wanted to make a comment about the residential nature of this matter. And, and that is that all of our stations, every single one of them is located adjacent to or across the street from residential neighborhoods. This is not an unusual situation. They are in residential neighborhoods. We went through a process in Menlo Park before where the community was invited. It's a normal part of the, I mean, we need to get approval from the city itself for any station that's approved. In the case of Station 4 that was just approved, this was the county. But again, it involved a community of meetings and input and discussion of concerns and, to the extent possible, you know, mitigations of those concerns. So I just wanted to say that I think this is something that we're used to dealing with and that we would have to deal with as a matter of course. It's simply the process and I'm sure the city of Menlo Park would require us to do that.
Okay. Thank you for those comments, Director Brimson. Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So my question is that the last time that there was communication on this issue before today, there was actually correspondence that went back and forth between the city and the fire district. At the time during the pandemic, when the city was going through significant budget cutting and candidly was reaching out to the fire district to see if there was interest in the property. And what would be very helpful today would be to see updated correspondence, following up on the prior correspondence from the fire district, setting forth whether or not the issues and statements in that letter are still the position of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Yeah, I remember at least the most recent letter was in connection with sort of the Willow property. And one of the stipulations was that the issues regarding Choco needs to be resolved. And I think that there was also a request for, for some appraisal fees to be reimbursed among, in that letter. And so, and so I think I echo Councilmember Mueller and specifically the extent to which we're now just sort of talking about the Choco property. And sort of what are, you know, what are the elements of that, of that engagement or that offer? I'm going to go to Councilmember Wilson and then after that to President McLaughlin.
First off, it's really nice to be holding this meeting together and it's nice to see lots of familiar faces. So we should do this again. I just wanted to ask the fire district about the urgency of the acquisition. I appreciate the clarification on your timeline and horizon. But kind of in terms of, it sounds like you're, you need to make a decision on kind of renovation or rebuilding is what I'm hearing. Kind of when is that go-no-go decision point in terms of when that would take place?
Yeah, please go, Chief. I think though that they're already engaged in the renovations to meet the current needs at that property. And just, and just before I throw to you, Chief, so we understand, the current lease has, was it like 48 more years? What's, what's the remaining term in the current lease? Does anyone know off the top of their head?
I can't remember if we did it for 55 or 50 more years. But, you know, what happened was the last one wasn't fully executed. So we've subsequently paid you 50 or 55 more dollars in advance for that many years. So I think we're good for another, at least 48. I'd have to look at it. I actually have a check here, so, you know, I could look in a moment. But, you know, to answer the question, I mean, we most definitely have to address that we have a two-unit, five-person crew working out of that station and we have four bedrooms. And with COVID, we can't co-locate two people in one bedroom anymore. Not that that's ideal. So that's why they're living, you know, in the house next door that we purchased. You know, that's out of necessity and it's a health and safety issue, obviously, for the crew. Whether that's going to be, you know, long-term as things get better, we'll have to look at that. But, you know, most certainly, you know, we don't have a big enough station for what we're doing currently. So we're looking at bringing on an architect to see how much it would cost to do some renovation to the station. You know, I know that, you know, the intent would be to do as little as possible, quite honestly, because, you know, we may be tearing the station down in the future, depending upon how, you know, these types of discussions go. The shop in the back equally is in the same boat. You know, when we purchased the facility, we didn't have the size of AppRast that we have now. We've gone to tiller ladder trucks. And simply what that means for you is, you know, we have a lot more maneuverability with those trucks, which actually should make you happy because the turning radius before used to be 66 feet. Now it's something like 28 feet. So that means that the restrictions we would place upon development in the past no longer exist once we get a second ladder truck that's a tiller truck. Because now your developments can be different than they were in the past because of fire district restrictions on the size and turning radius of our truck. Bottom line for that shop, it wasn't built big enough to house a piece of equipment that large. So, you know, when we have to do repairs, the truck is partially inside outside. And if the truck is out of service, it can't be stored inside unless we leave the doors to the shop open, which is both a security issue and, you know, a problem for the mechanic. So, you know, that's an immediate need for us as well. So to, you know, directly answer the councilwoman's question, the reality is, is we're, we're having to make, make decisions on modifications in the very near future just for operational purposes. We can't operate the way we've done in the past based upon what we, what we currently have in fleet and the number of resources we're running out of that facility.
Director Salano. Director Salano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, we've been pondering this purchase for quite a while. And since we do own the house next door and that was purchased, you're definitely right. There was some issues relative to the neighborhood there because they felt that we were going to buy up a bunch of homes. And it created a lot of, I don't know, I can't call it mistrust, but a letter was sent out without actually having a town meeting there and talking about purchasing a series of residents there to expand that station. So we already, you know, the district already has a tremendous investment there in Station 77. And I'm sure the residents there want us to be able to serve that community in a way safely and efficiently. So it's kind of like we keep going after this parcel to try to purchase it because we plan to put additional financial resources into it. I know we have a 50-something year lease on it, but it would just make sense for us to be able to buy that parcel. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Director Salano. Councilmember Wilson, I see your hand is up. I don't know if it's, okay. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just wanted to follow up on Director Salano's comment. And so just a question, when was the last time there was any community outreach done in the area? I know that there, it's difficult now. Just thinking about, when's the last time you've done community outreach? And when you do community outreach, is it only related to a project? Or is there a process or policy the fire district has to have continuous community outreach?
I'll look the chief into that.
Yeah, oh, I'll go, we'll go to the chief and then, and then I see that Director Chin Crowley wants to comment, but then I also had Director Jones. So, so let's go for the chief.
Well, I was going to answer the councilwoman Taylor's question. Because the last time, yeah, so, so the last time that we were there, I was there with the chief, with the, with the Bellhaven Homeowners Association, which was not necessarily a district community outreach effort, was in 2019. But Dom, in terms of the actual community outreach portion, I think it was probably, I want to say 2017-ish. Harold might know.
Yeah, the last time that we did any kind of check-in with the community was when the house, the house that we purchased became available. You can imagine that we were, well, quite honestly, concerned that the broader neighborhood would not appreciate us purchasing that house. We'd heard, obviously, when, you know, 70, we're getting 70 some odd people in the boardroom complaining or concerned about what we were doing, I think got everybody's attention. To their credit, you know, government worked that day. We listened and we changed our plans. And then we had a subsequent follow-up meeting at the station with the community who came. And we gave them, you know, the plan at that time of what we were going to do going forward, including some cleanup at the site, which we've also subsequently done. So buying that house was, you know, something we said, well, we're, we're not going to move in that direction. So we did do check-in with the community when we bought the house. Got zero opposition to it. In fact, some of the same people who had been in pretty staunch opposition to what the district was doing, very vocal, were now some of the same people that were bringing, you know, that project to us, saying, we think you guys should buy that house. And then subsequently also said, you should buy the one next door, which we don't need because it's blight. So that's an abandoned home that burned. I think it's still empty. And as much as I would like to see it cleaned up too, that's the district, you know, doesn't need another house next door. With the one house we have, we could build what we need. So, you know, we didn't need to buy it. But that's the last time we did a check-in. And I did look at the check. It was dated 2016 and the lease is for 55 years. So I have the, like I said, have the check framed just because it was significant. So, and we wanted to make sure after the last time, when we found out that the lease had not been executed correctly, that we made sure this time it was. So that everything is correct. It's fully executed. You know, there's a receipt for the purchase of the, or the, every year for the dollar. So everything's good. And again, that's, we could stay with that if, if this doesn't get worked out. I think in discussions with the board and I'll let Director McLaughlin cover it. I mean, you know, this is not, I hope you don't think this is a hard sell. It isn't. We can still move forward and do what we need to do. But obviously, you know, ideally, you know, when you're going to make improvements to anything, especially as we look down the road and, and see that we're, at some point, we're going to have to increase the size of the station, that we, you know, we work on this as well, if that's what the council wants to do. So, you know, I'll let, I'll let the board president talk about that. But that's, you know, I don't want anybody to think that we're, you know, trying to pull a fast one or put undue pressure on you. At least I'm not.
Thanks, thanks for that, that, Chief. And if you were trying to put pressure, that's totally fine too. We, we all got jobs to do. Director Jones.
Thank you. Let me see if I can frame my question. It's like a question-comment statement. But the, the question is, for me, is how would you, and not necessarily you, Mayor Combs, but the city council as a whole envision us, the district, soliciting community concerns about, one, whether the site itself become permit, become a permanently location for the fire station? Because it, to me, it, it focuses on whether the district is, one, supplying the needs for the area, if there's too much traffic that's going in and out. I mean, those are, those are, those are good concerns. I mean, it would be helpful to understand it. So the question really is in terms of, does that community solicitation, would it take the form or soliciting their concern, would it take the form of community meetings? Would there be an overall survey done, solicit from the entire community to get feedback? And once, once any of that information comes through, if there's a positive ramification or positive feedback from the community, would that in and of itself be a contributing factor for this, the city as a whole moving forth with allowing the district to acquire a property? With all of the previous conversation and safeguard that was thrown out by the chief and also you, Mayor Combs? So, so I knew it as kind of a mouthful, but it's really focusing on how the envision of this, the community, getting community input into this, this process? And what would be factors that, that, that outcomes that we would look at to try to see if there's any See if there's any favorability for moving forward with acquisition.
Thanks for that comment, Director Jones. Fair point. I think my, my first response is all of the above, right? You, you, you know, we all sort of know the, the tools that. Tend to be go-tos when it comes to sort of getting community outreach, community engagement, getting some sense of community sentiment. And, and it would be those, right? Now, whether that's a meeting or whether it's a survey, you know, something else, but certainly. It is from, from that, that, that toolbox. And I, I think. The question would be like, you know, what specifically would the council be looking for as far as like? The process and the forum and, and what it would want to sort of get at the. On the other side of that, like as far as like, for, for it to feel comfortable and, and if, if. A determination to, to, to sell, to sell the, the property. But it's a fair point. Again, this is just me, so sort of spitballing stuff is not an official sort of directive from the city council. And so, and so that would be. A next, or an important step. And so I think, again, given that, I'm going to go to, to President McLaughlin next, but. Just to sort of kind of wind down the, the, the discussion, I, I think for us. It seems as though what we're looking for is, is a clear sort of letter of, of some intent to. To acquire or to purchase, right? And, and a clean letter like, right? I think, like I said, I think the last letter we got sort of. Mixed in issues regarding the Willow property. Seeing as how that seems somewhat strenuous, let's just sort of focus on, on, on the Choco property. You know, a letter expressing that, that interest, what things of which the, the district feels that it could. Commit to, based on some of the history there, whether it's, you know, right of first refusal. Or something else. And then, and then I think then the ball would be in the city council's court about. What sort of next ups? Is there one at this moment, no interest in, in, in sort of engaging in the transaction? And then that, that's one option. Or, or two, yeah, we, we like that proposal as is. So let's, let's begin negotiations. Or some third option would be. That's the starting point. And so these are maybe some other things of which we would want to, to bake into. Into a, a transaction. So I'm going to go to the president next and then, and then Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, a quick couple of comments in responding to Councilmember Wallison. You know, our planning horizon on these facilities is, is long. You know, we really have a ten-year, say a five to ten-year planning horizon. It's a big investment. We, you know, the, I, I think we're spending about twelve million on the Station Four rebuild. This would be more than that because of the, the fleet maintenance facility, the water. Rescue. So I'd put it more in the ten to twenty million dollar range. It's a big investment. By anyone's measure. You know, the, you know, whether or not the, the active firehouse remains or goes elsewhere, all has to be factored into that. So. I can't say that there's an urgency. Pardon the pun, nothing's on fire, but. You know, to accommodate that long planning horizon for both the budget and, and just the logistics. And the sighting location, the sighting decisions that need to be made. The sooner we get that going, you know, again, just the better we're able to serve, you know, the members of the, the district, the citizens that reside in the district. And then to Councilmember Mueller's point, I, I will commit to updating that letter that, that she received. This falls within the purview of our Strategic Planning Committee. So we'll put it into their next meeting. They can work with the chief, you know, resign, refine the particulars and, and we'll get something. Back to you that addresses the issues that we've discussed today. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And then, and then Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you, President McLaughlin. So one question that I've always sort of had around this discussion because the lease term is so long is. When the Fire District makes a capital improvement. How long does it estimate the life of the building will last? And is it right? I mean, I'm assuming that, I mean, I mean, the downtown, obviously, fire station was just redone. Is there an estimate of how long the life of that building will be that you're going to build?
You know, I, I would point out that Station Four again was in operation for, for seventy years and Station One is, is only slightly younger than that. I would defer to the chief on, I don't know if there's a formal process where we designate the lifespan of these facilities.
Yeah, we do. So, you know, typically, and it depends on finishes and different things. I mean, obviously. You know, you get what you pay for, I think, just like any building, depending upon how you build it. But. These, you know, the newer facilities, I think you guys have experienced the same thing when you talk about essential service facilities that have to be built to a higher standard. They truly are lasting between, you know, reasonably fifty and seventy years. I wouldn't, you know, the older stations that we have, I wouldn't necessarily say they were built to essential facility standards. I mean, I'm talking about seismic. I'm talking about. You know, like Station Six, as you referred to, doesn't have any wood in it. It's got all metal. Components, whether it's metal studs or steel frame. You know, we try and use mostly concrete even for the, the floors in the building. I mean, everything is pretty much tried, we try to build to a high standard so it lasts for a very, very long time. And, you know, they're big garages that people live around, right? And the primary purpose of a firehouse. Is it's a working facility. I mean, we go through a lot of. Dishwashers and refrigerators, believe it or not, over the cycle of a firehouse because, you know. Got to have a place to put your food and you got to wash your clothes. So that seems to be the, or wash your dishes, you know, but that's. That's what we go through most. But the stations, again, if you build them right, you're looking at seventy years at least.
And just to follow up on that because we've, we're spending a lot of time on this topic. So we have fifty years left on the lease. Is this really about trying to get certainty for the next twenty years of the life of that building or? Because I, I'm trying to. I mean, candidly, when you look at a fifty-year lease that's, has the option for renewal and the life of the building is seventy years. I'm, while I'm empathetic to, oh, the district wants to buy it, I'm also trying to understand. Like what is the, the crux of the reason why it's imperative?
Yeah, and I, I hopefully, I guess I didn't bring it up or articulate it well enough. So let me reemphasize. So, you know. Obviously, M2 has changed significantly. The original building built twenty-seven years ago. Is a single, is typically a single unit, even though it's got a double bay, one is a back end. Appraps room. It only has four bedrooms. Even if we modify it to six, it's undersized. So what we're looking at for the build out in the community already there, again, M2 primarily. It's an undersized facility. So it's going to need to be on the replacement cycle well ahead of what we had anticipated. As Director McLaughlin, I think, did a good job of explaining, we're looking at, you know, eight to ten years out. But, you know, that's how far we forecast out. That's why we bought that piece of property because we saw it as strategic. So. You know, it, it needs to be replaced simply because it's not big enough to really handle the. Number of resources that we would need out there for that community.
But my, and I understand that, chief. I do understand it needs to be replaced. But my, what I'm trying to understand is if the life of the building is seventy years and there's a fifty-year lease. And that's a forty-year. That means forty years left at time of replacement, which then gives you thirty years left on the life of the building. But you have an option to renewals, option to renew the lease. So my, what I'm trying to understand is, why is the sale of the building? Why is the sale of the land predicated? Why is the. Improvement to the station predicated on the sale of the land if you have an option to renewal and you're going to get forty years anyway, which is half a life of that building? And then on the renewal, assumably, you'll get the rest of the life of that building. Why would there be, why, what, what is the imperative then for the sale for the, the refurbishment of the building? And that's really, and I'm just, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm really trying to understand what that issue is because we're, we've spent a lot of time going back and forth on this. Between the district and the city.
Well, you know, like I said, I mean, I think that having the new lease agreement was a relief and we finally got there. That took a while, but, you know, we got it. But I will say that, you know, you're really looking at, and you raised a fair question. I, I think, again, President McLaughlin covered it. You know, it actually was less expensive than, than what Station Four is. And we're looking at probably a fifteen million dollar facility today. That's what we're going to spend for Station Four. So just imagine, you know, within the next. Ten years, the district needs to replace that facility, spend fifteen million dollars to replace it. You know, I think from the district's perspective. You know, we would, we would like to have the land and own it based upon that level of investment. Yeah, that seems to be a fair request. Certainly, you know, a board can decide not to do that and, and work off of a lease agreement. That takes us partially through that. But, you know, it's a security issue. We own, like you, all of our property where we expend. And put a lot of investment into. I mean, you know, whether it's fifteen or twenty or more million in the future. Who, who knows? But that definitely is, is a factor in, in the desire for ownership.
Thank you, chief. I understand. I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly that. The lease plus the option renewed would, would bring you through the entirety of the life of the building. As estimated by.
Yeah, not, not the current one. And the only reason I say not the current one is because remember that building sadly was undersized. For what now has changed in that area.
But, but, but chief, what I'm saying is, if ten years out from now, if you make the investment to renew that, to go ahead and refurbish that building.
Right.
The current lease, but the option to renew will bring you through the entire type life period of the new building.
Well, it would be forty years. So if you think about, we're five into it. If we build the station in ten years, that leaves forty years. So there would be some level of, you know, concern. Forty years from then, what would happen if, you know, you're trying to get, again, get thirty more years out of the building, but.
Right, right. But if the city had an option to renew for the entirety of another thirty years or another fifty years, that would bring you for through the entire life of that building. But the improved building.
Yeah, look, again, I think you could go either way. I mean, certainly. The board will have to make a decision at some point, the level of investment based upon a lease versus ownership.
I appreciate that. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to make sure I understand all of it completely.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we, we get it. But I'll let Director McLaughlin handle it.
Yeah, I think fair point, Councilmember Mueller, and I think the, in not to put words in your mouth. Getting to like how much of this is an American cultural preference to have a fee simple transaction to own, right? Whereas in, in other places, like it, you know, something like a ninety-nine-year lease is, is essentially like the possession of, of a lifetime plus. And that in, in some cases gives those people who then possess on that ninety-nine-year lease, the, the, the sense of comfort. Or certainty to do whatever it is that they want to do or make whatever investment. Again, that's, that's prevalent in lots of, lots of cultures, not in countries, not so much in, in America. In America, there is. Like generally a desire to, to own in total. And then that being the basis for, for having a. You know, for making those long-term investments. Again, nothing wrong with that. But, but yeah, so I'm going to go to, to Councilmember Wallace. And then we're going to close out this discussion because we need to, to go on with, with, with the president.
Yeah, I just had a quick clarifying question about our planning and, and my assumption for, and this might be totally wrong. But you needed to buy it because you want to merge the lots with the house next door to make that three-bay station? And I didn't know if that was one of the reasons that had to be purchased rather than leased, and if that could be done under a lease. That was just my clarifying question.
I'm not a lawyer, but I can tell you there would be some complication based upon that. But in that, and again, when the district purchased the house, it was kind of a, again, a leap of faith. Because we can't build what we need unless we acquired that piece of property. So.
Okay, so that had, there might be a legal way with the lease, but, okay.
Yeah, I don't know the way, but it would be.
Okay, thanks.
Chief, a leap of faith with, which I'll totally give you, but, but I bet that the district's investment in that property has gone up since you purchased it. So it wasn't, wasn't too much of a leak. But we're, we're going to close it out with, with President McLaughlin. And I do know that there is, is, is a, so we'll go to President McLaughlin. And then there is a, a public comment on this. And so. We'll, we'll actually have the last word on this topic from, from a member of the public. I think, I think Ms. Bems has had her hand up for a while. So, so we'll go to the president. And then, and then we'll let Ms. Bems make a public comment and then we'll, we'll close out, we'll close out this agenda item.
You know, very briefly, Councilmember Mueller, I, I get what you're saying, the, the point that you make in, and we will address. Those issues in, in our letter to you. Thank you.
Now, Clerk Karen, you can open public comment for, for, from Ms. Bems or anyone else who wants to make a, a, a comment on, on this, this topic. Before we go on to the next agenda item.
Thank you very much, Mayor Combs. So at this time, we are reopening public comment for item C1. And our first speaker will be Cheryl Bips.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me? Okay, great. I just, sorry, I wasn't able to attend the whole meeting, but I did want to just raise one little. Point that I remember from the past and interaction with the community. One word that I haven't heard was imminent domain. And that is something that came at the community really hard and fast. And that was what really created a lot of angst within our community. When we saw that the Fire Department was actually considering taking, I believe at the time it was three homes under eminent domain. So I just want that to be reflected accurately. So that we're not, you know, in a fan, to me, what seems like a fantasy of what happened. But the other questions I had, the metrics on the truck. So if you have about a thousand calls. I think it's important to look at where those calls are actually going to and to provide that information because as someone who lives in this community. One reason that some of us were advocating for Willow to be considered as an alternative place to put, or to put additional trucks. Maybe you'd have two locations is because we're aware, acutely aware of all the development that's happening. And the density that's happening in our corporate areas. And it seems that a lot of those trucks are usually blazing through the community down Chillicothe and then Newbridge. Only to go to Willow Road. And then my last question would be. If you aren't able to purchase the land as the only option for the Fire District to abandon the area. Because I hope that's not the case, but at the same time, it seems with these extremely long leases. That you would still be able to accomplish your goal of provide, providing excellent emergency services. During the lifespan of any building that you desire to build. So that's all I had to say. And thank you. And thank you for all the service that you provide. To the community.
Thank you, Ms. Bems, for that, that, that comment. I don't see any other hands up. City clerk here. And so also, we can, we can close public comment. And, and just in response. Ms. Bems, of course, I'm. Not a part of the Fire, Fire, Fire District, but I think abandoning the area is not something that anyone mentioned. And I think I'm comfortable speaking for them and saying that that's not, not an option. At, at all. So, 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 but, but thank you overall for, for, for your comments. A, a number of really, really insightful points. Okay, with, with that, we're going to move on. We, we've got. Less than an hour left into, to agenda items. We're, we're going to move on to C2. Which is sort of generically titled Emergency Services in Menlo Park. And, and there's a few sort of sub items. So bullets we've listed, the, the Emergency Services Contract between the city and the district. Whether that's something that needs, that arrangement needs to be updated or changed. This possibility of some combined emergency operations center. The LRED system and. And the default disaster plan, that, this idea of, of the district sort of taking the lead. For, for, for twelve hours. And so, so those are, those are some of the, the sub bullets. With that, I'll, I'll kick it to City Clerk Karen to, to call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item C2. Emergency Services in Menlo Park. As that you engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press a star nine to engage that virtual hand. And our first public commenter will be Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you also for your service. I'd hope to comment after your discussion, just in case there were some points I wanted to make. Let me just say very generally, I think this meeting is. Very timely and, and also overdue at the same time. And the topics are future oriented. The Emergency Operations Center, LRED, even a disaster plan. You know, they're future oriented. And what concerns me the most about our arrangement with the Fire District is I've come to educate. You know, they're future oriented. And what concerns me the most about our arrangement with the fire district is I've come to educate myself. I spent considerable time reading, even attending courses, you know, put on by Cal OES is that we're neglecting key aspects of being ready. And for example, if we just focus on response and we don't have a recovery plan, what are we going to do with all these displaced people who need shelter? We, it's predicted that will happen. I recently heard a San Proscito Creek presentation where they talked about 400 residents being displaced. And, and a number of them sued the city apparently. That will be minor compared to what could happen if the Hayward Fault Line erupts. So you know, it, along with response, we, we need all these other elements. And so I'd like to point us all to the FEMA's National Preparedness Goal and their five mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. And I think this is a very useful construct to think about the matter. So we all have a common language and we can work together collectively. And I point out that there are 32 capability development sheets. And each, each one of them, the first three items are planning, public information and warning, and then operational coordination. And what is needed is more transparency, a better arrangement with the fire district. And also where the holes are and a plan to fix them. And currently, the fire district is involved in various Menlo Park efforts related to this whole topic that I don't think the fire board is kept informed of. And the city council, I don't think is, at least in a public meeting. And that would pertain to the Zone Haven evacuation zone planning that's underway. And I, I don't know if they have a plan to address functional needs of residents, but if they don't have cars. There's a deeper level of planning that needs to happen. And then the fire district may be completing our 2020 preparedness survey that will ultimately go to the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services Joint Paris Association. So I, I think we need a lot more transparency. And oh, and the fire district's involved in the update to our local hazard mitigation plan. So we, we, we need a different structure here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for any public comment on item C2. Engage that hand feature in the bottom of the screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cell phone, you can press star nine. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, we can close public comment and you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you, Ms. Bramlett for, for the, the comment. Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So first off, I just want to say I actually agree with, with Ms. Bramlett. I think there's more that we can be doing between the two agencies. And at the outset, right now, we are actually at a, at a, at a critical point in the pandemic. I'd like to give a shout out to Councilmember Taylor and Bell Haven Action, as well as the County of San Mateo and the Ravenswood Clinic that ran, ran a wonderful, run a wonderful vaccination clinic this weekend, this past weekend in Bell Haven. And there will be another vaccination clinic, I'm told, in Bell Haven and, and that the county will be running very soon. But we are about to receive $6 million from the federal government related to COVID-19 relief. And what I actually, I've talked with the city manager about and, and one of my colleagues about is the idea of working with the fire district to try to take vaccination shots and specifically the Johnson, Johnson shot, one shot directly to residents at their homes going door to door. And, and, and select, and, and neighborhoods, but also to people who can't leave their homes. And so that's something that I think would be a wonderful partnership. The city, we will be the ones receiving the funds. Obviously, the fire district has, has EMTs trained to be able to administer those shots. This isn't something that we would be able to obviously work out tonight in this, in this discussion, but I throw it out there for both bodies to consider that $6 million will be coming soon. And we are going to reach a point in the pandemic, we're asking people even to travel what would be shorter distances to, to clinics will be too far for them, you know, when we're trying to get everyone vaccinated. So I leave that with all of you. I hope it's something that we can take up at our council in the future and that you can take up at the fire board in the future and we can work out the details of that. Thank you.
Thank you for the, that comment, Councilmember Mueller. Um, so does anyone want else to, to, to weigh in on either of the Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you, Councilmember Mueller, for the recognition. I appreciate it with the COVID vaccines last weekend. I wanted to follow up on Ms., a couple of things that Ms. Bramlett said. And that is who is preparing the 2020 Menlo Park Preparedness Report?
I don't know that someone from staff would have to come on and provide that, that answer.
Oh, thank you. I, and there's the local hazard mitigation plan and there is the OES plan. And I think our staff is collaborating with the district staff in the preparation of both of those.
And just a follow-up question, Mr. Rome Robinson, and that is, is that due soon or is that something that's going to take some time?
I honestly, I don't know the due date of those two reports. Some of them have already been at least initially responded to.
Thank you.
I, I would be happy to put the dates together and send it both to the district and to the council members as a follow-up to this meeting.
President McLaughlin.
No, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Mueller's proposal. I think something like that has tremendous merit. And I would like to explore it on our end. It falls within our Emergency Preparedness Subcommittee and you know, we'll refer it to them again to work with the chief and, you know, see what, what's possible there. I think that I think that could be a marvelous way for us to you know, protect the community. So I'd like to move forward with that, you know, exploring what are the possibilities.
Thank you, President McLaughlin.
Councilmember Wilson and then Director Chin Corley.
Thank you. And I, I want to thank Ms. Bramlett for all of the information that she sent to all of us prior to the meeting. And I, I, City Manager Jerome Robinson, I do think it would be helpful for the council to have updates on these documents. And so we know where we stand as a city on this type of preparation. And also I, I think I've requested before just a study session in general on our emergency preparedness and disaster and how all these components fit together. I do want to ask about the contract to follow up on some of Ms. Bramlett's emails that she sent. It looks like we pay, are paying about $50,000 a year for the support that the fire district is, is giving. And Ms. Bramlett has alluded to the fact that possibly East Palo Alto and Atherton are getting similar support without payment. And so I, I just wanted to follow up and see if, if someone could provide information about that. So we, we do have to be responsible with our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Wilson. I, I would imagine that would be someone on the fire district board or staff, President McLaughlin.
I'll pick up on that one. You know, Ms. Bramlett has done a lot of work in this area and I, I, she deserves kudos for, for what she's, she's done and the issues that she's raised. As we considered, you know, some of the issues that she brought forward as well as other information that, that came that became known to the board, you know, we, again, working through the Emergency Preparation Subcommittee commissioned a, an internal program review. I, I think that will be very useful in addressing a, a variety of issues. The, one of them being the contract that exists now between the city and the district. That hasn't been revisited for a number of years. So it, it was timely. It, it needs to be reviewed. Is it still relevant? You know, are, are we treating the constituent jurisdictions equally? You know, those are all reasonable questions and you deserve an answer to that. And, and we need to know as well on, on our end. I think I, I would also look for, you know, a review of, of responsibilities, obligations, duties under the law. You know, there's a, there's any number of statutes and regulations that apply in this area. You know, are we in compliance? You know, you know, are some changes necessary? I, I want to move forward in a way that I should say the board wants to move forward in a way that's, that's responsible in, in, and provides the highest level of service again to the citizens that we, that we provide our services to. And our interactions with the city, each of the cities, each of the jurisdictions is key to doing that. So I, I think once we get the results of this program review, I would welcome a workshop with the city to, again, to review the results of that study and as it relates to our relationship with the city and how do we best move forward again, to provide, to provide the highest level of service to the citizens we serve.
And, and President McLaughlin, when do you anticipate that study being completed?
You know, I, I would defer to Director Chin Corley or the chief on that. I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Director Chin Corley, your, your hand's up and you were next, so you can.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So there are a couple of things I wanted to address. One is regarding the vaccines. And so, so I've actually been involved with a mobile clinic, vaccine clinic. And I understand, you know, the logistics and it's something that the, in talking to the district volunteers of the various groups as the chair of the Emergency Preparament, Emergency Preparedness Committee. I know that there's a desire to, to help. And I, and I know that there may be desire as well from the firefighters and not just with ours. Really, the issue is about supply. So, you know, as we have seen in East Palo Alto in the press conference, you know, access to the vaccines, you know, continues to be an issue. So the idea of a, of a mobile, even mobile vaccination clinic, I think could be helpful and it's something we should explore. But really, the logistical piece that is problematic is the supply of vaccines. That doesn't mean that, you know, things couldn't change, but I just want everyone to know that I have kind of just looked into the just on the edges, really, it's because the issue was brought up by the volunteer groups of the fire district. Councilmember Wilson, in terms of the like the, the review, it's, it's going to be a very broad-based review of our entire Office of Emergency Management. The board approved this. And so we just started this and it's going to be, and it's going to involve three different stakeholders, the, the volunteer stakeholders, the internal stakeholders who provide the service, and also the governmental agency stakeholders, which would include, you know, like the city of Menlo Park, the city of East Palo Alto, in the town of Atherton, and even the county. So that process has just started. But we think it's going to be, it's going to have good results that, that we can kind of build on. And so we're looking forward to getting back that information. Does that help?
I, I actually have a follow-up though on that. Can someone say definitively whether other cities get services that Menlo Park pays $50,000 for? Like, so we pay $50,000 for something. Is, 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 does, is there anything you guys do? And I, in, in Atherton pays, doesn't pay $50,000. East Palo Alto doesn't pay anything. And so is there some set of services that you provide us? That you say, you can say definitively, someone, and this is not just to you, Director Chin Corley, this is anyway, because someone can say, and maybe it's more appropriate for, for staff, that someone can say definitively, yes, we do not do those things for East Palo Alto and we do not do them for, for, for Atherton. And again, not that $50,000 is an enormous amount of money. And these are two public agencies, but, but I think to Councilmember Wilson's point, it is important that if we are paying this, we can either say that like, well, we give it to the fire district as, as a nice to have or nice to give. Or, or we give it because we get very specific services that we would not get if we did not pay that money.
So I, Mayor Combs, can I, can I just, I think probably that's, that question is probably best for the chief because I know that at the staff level, there have been agreements that have been put in place. And I know that Ryan Zolakoffer has been involved with, you know, on the ground with your staff. So I, I don't know if Chief Chapel Homan would like to answer that question.
Oh, I'm happy to answer that question.
Thank you.
So, yeah, just so you know, that is a different relationship that we have with both Atherton and East Palo Alto. In Atherton, they use, I believe it's the sergeant concept, meaning that's their primary person that's responsible for some of the things that the district has worked with your staff under the city manager and police chief to accomplish. And East Palo Alto, they have hired a specific person who does that. Does our, our representative work with both of those individuals at times? The answer is yes, but it's not a direct, as direct of a relationship. Are things different under COVID? I think what you don't hear is, you know, under COVID, a lot of things have changed dramatically, quite honestly. I, I know that, you know, Ryan was involved and I'm sure Starla could speak to, you know, all the different times that you had your virtual EOC meetings. He had a presence in every one of those as not only a representative of the fire district, but equally working on behalf of whatever the city manager or the police chief or the staff needed to have done that would either involve something he could be responsible for to the city of Menlo Park or to the fire district. That, that's, that was completely different. We had, we had no presence in East Palo Alto. In fact, they didn't have a presence in East Palo Alto. They had moved to the county for some of that. And then equally Atherton, which I don't think had as many issues as the city of Menlo Park has had, didn't have that same level of involvement that you had, which was a credit to you and a credit to the city manager in terms of trying to manage the pandemic and all the impacts that you subsequently have had on staff functions, the city itself, volunteers wanting to engage. You know, there was a number of things that, that were coming up at that time. And I think for whatever reason, that never gets discussed. And Ryan currently is also representing the city to some extent with the county to do, to make sure some of the updates are done. Now, that said, he isn't the city of Menlo Park. So you know, nevertheless, you still have a police chief and a city manager that are in charge of the entire process, let alone the impact. So I think they'll be able to better speak to, you know, how that would work with, with the council's involvement. But, you know, we have a, we've got a longstanding relationship. And I would hope that, you know, the money is never the issue. Really, the engagement was the biggest issue before, when this was starting to languish and the district stepped in. So, you know, I don't want to speak for the directors. I think any type of financial arrangement they would have to speak to, but it certainly is different, I think, than maybe sometimes is being put out there. I mean, Ryan deals with your city directly on a lot of different issues that you, you know, request that he be involved with. And that is not the same relationship with the other jurisdictions. There is support for them. We support everybody. I mean, that's, you know, but it's not as direct of a relationship.
Well, thank, thanks for that, Chief. Director Solano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for, for Starla. Starla, who is the direct contact person for your volunteer groups within the city of Menlo Park?
You mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Director Solano, I'm not sure I quite tracked what you're asking.
Well, like, like the city of Atherton, the town of Atherton uses their police chief. EPA has hired an individual to coordinate those services. And I was just, I don't know, kind of inquisitive as to who within the city of Menlo Park is. is kind of lays on or deals with the volunteer groups like Menlo Park Ready.
So we haven't, we don't have an official relationship with Menlo Park Ready right now?
Okay, thank you. So, you know, this might be a great, great opportunity since you are just hired a new chief who's very community relations orientated during the time period. He was in the city San Mateo as a captain. You know, this might be a good time to revisit that type of relationship with the volunteer groups. So my major concern is who are the major contact persons within the particular communities we serve? Since as a fire district or as a special district, our primary responsibility is not emergency management, emergency planning. It is, it falls within the cities and towns and the county within the state. So I've been on this board almost, gosh, going on 12 years. And I've always tried to figure out that if a disaster happens, who's in charge? And since we do have the cities and the town, of course, and of course, the county that have the ultimate statutory responsibility through the state of California, and us as a fire district do have the support function since those cities and towns fall within our jurisdiction. But that was always a major question. So I just hope that there could be some, can I put it? Some help with some of these, especially Menlo Park Ready, to have some type of coordinator within the city of Menlo Park or to work with since they are such a critical part of an emergency management system. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Director Solano, for those comments. And hopefully, maybe one action item, one of the several action items from this meeting could be, you know, some establishment of a clear POC when it comes to the volunteer groups. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And I have, I think, two questions and one comment. And actually, one of the questions you asked already, just around what are we paying for? And thank you, Chief Chapel Hyman, for explaining it to us. So first question is, who is the Emergency Preparedness Committee? For the fire district?
For the district right now, this year, it is Director Chang Crowley and Director Jones.
And Director Jones. Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, is it possible to have Mr. Zolokov do a report out to the council?
You know, I think that's something that we would want to discuss with the chief, you know, is the timing of it. I think, and I'll leave it at that. I mean, we've got this study underway. And, you know, I think that's something that we would want to evaluate, you know, when are we ready to make such a report on?
Okay, thank you. And then my last comment is regarding COVID and COVID vaccine, COVID testing. As you all know, I represent District One, which has the highest number of COVID cases in the city. And so I ask this respectfully, that there is, are any plans happening that you include me in the beginning of the conversation? We have asked for COVID testing, and it took about eight months for that to happen in the community. Also, when it comes to the funding, the $6.4 million, I would hope that the idea isn't to spend the entire amount of funds, but there's also opportunity for the community to say what they would like to have. So we skip community input. We wait until the end of it to get community input when we need to start doing it in the beginning. It was a very painful process, but definitely well worth everything that each person that participated in the COVID vaccine that happened over the weekend on March 13th. I also respectfully ask not just that the community be a part of that, but also Ravenswood Clinic, because they do serve nearly 2,000 people who live in District One. And my last comment is that I appreciate everybody on this call because this was definitely long overdue. And I think it's been nearly two years since we had a joint meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for those comments. Director Chang Crowley.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I chair the committee, and Director Jones is on it with me. So we would love to work with y'all. My initial questions was for, you know, was for ideas about volunteerism. So nothing has been set in stone. It was really just to talk to the main volunteer group leaders initially. But I would love to talk to you about that. And the mobile clinic I was involved with was for another agency, and it was very successful. But again, it's very, very targeted in terms of who would receive it, the vaccine. And I would love to work with you on some ideas that I have about this. Are you, so here's a question for the mayor. Who are the liaisons from the city council to the fire board or the fire district? Have those been assigned yet?
Yeah, this is a test. Let's see if I get it right. I think it is Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Mueller. Am I correct? Or no, am I correct or not? I just want to make sure.
Well, in any case, Councilmember Taylor, I would, I know that you've done a lot of work. And I would love to learn about some of the things that you've done and tell you some of the, about the things that I've been doing elsewhere. So maybe we can meet offline. I'd love that.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Director Chang Crowley. So we'll close out this agenda item because we're coming to the time with a comment from Director Bernstein. But after that, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Excuse me, thank you for letting me speak. I, in my other life, I am also the block preparedness coordinator for Area 28, which is the Willows. And this emergency planning is something very close to my heart as a private citizen. And I think it's really important, and I want to put as much encouragement as I possibly can at the hands or in the hands of the city council for doing something about emergency planning or disaster planning. Basically, this is an unusual situation where the fire district has lots of expertise in terms of responding to emergencies and responding to disasters. But under state law, the city council is the one responsible for managing a disaster. And the reality is, and this is as much on us as it is on the city itself, we don't really have a plan. Nobody knows where to go in the event of evacuation. Nobody knows who to call. We don't know anything. We don't have a plan. And we need a plan desperately. The fire district study that's underway now will help answer some of those questions. How best we can actually create an emergency management team structure, whatever. But I, this fourth point that was on our agenda, I just want to speak to, which is the idea of having a default plan that we don't have to wait until the earthquake happens to know who's in charge initially. And I know there's always fears, for example, on the part of the city council, that their responsibilities would be usurped. The district doesn't want to do that. But I would argue that they are on duty 24/7. They have the ability to deal with reports and so forth. And that perhaps the fire agency should be designated in some sort of memorandum of understanding as a lead agency for a first period of time. The city could grab that responsibility back at any time it wanted to, but at least there was some plan in place. Now, we aren't prepared for the next six months or maybe a year to even fulfill that role, I don't believe. But I think it's something we should be moving toward. And I hope you will consider that there is some default plan in place. And I know all these other things always come up for us too. But we really need a plan. We need to be clear on who to call, where to go, what to do in the event of a disaster of some sort. So that's the point that I'd like to make.
Thank you, Director Bernstein, for those points. And so let's be clear again, one of the proposals is the idea that the district takes the lead for some period of time in the aftermath of an emergency. And again, I know our police chief, I think, hasn't even officially started yet. But I can imagine he's gonna not respond too kindly to that, to that suggestion. So, but putting that aside, because of course, he would be a key figure in that discussion. Like, to me, this district leading for a period only sort of makes sense if it is the case across all of your jurisdictions. And so if Atherton is saying that they'll let you lead for a period of time, and East Palo Alto is saying they let you lead for a period of time. So my question is, is that the case now? Are you having those discussions with those jurisdictions? And if not, what would make Menlo Park sort of different?
I think we'd like to have those discussions. This is the first meeting we've had in over a year. So we're starting with you. But yes, we would intend to have the same discussion with everyone. And you know what? If there's a better plan or a better way to do it, that's fine. We just need something in place.
I'm sorry. Thanks for those comments, Director Bernstein, Vice Mayor Nash, and then President McLaughlin.
Thank you. I just, since we're all here, and I wanted to take the opportunity to point out that Anna Schu's office sent out a letter today, actually yesterday, which is about that members can request community project funding for public sector projects directly to her. And one of the items under that is emergency operations center grants. And since we had both of our organizations together, I wanted to throw that out there to staff that that might be something. Although the apparently requests need to be submitted by March 31st. So there's about two weeks to pull it together, but it seemed like it was an opportunity to mention that to this group, these groups.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, for that heads up. President McLaughlin.
You know, I would just say, I think this is a period of opportunity for us. You know, you have a new chief that's coming on board. He will certainly have some ideas, I'm sure, in this realm. It's timely that we're doing this internal review of our program. You know, I think, you know, this idea of, again, command in that first 12 hours after a disaster, I think we'll have more clarity on that once he's in place and once we complete our internal review. And I think we can start discussing specifics. And I would like to propose that, you know, once these things come together, we're probably looking at late summer, early fall, that we plan on having some kind of a workshop or planning session where we review just where we're at and, you know, plot our way forward.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I think that's a sort of fair next steps when it comes to that issue. Director Chang Crowley. Director Chang.
Sorry, yeah, I don't know what happened. Anyway, thank you. So I just wanted to respond kind of to what Chuck's comments were about, you know, the 12 hours thing and what Jim talked about. This, we do have our meeting upcoming with the Atherton Town Council, which I think is going to be scheduled in about the first two weeks of April. And this agenda item that, or this item that we're talking about now is also going to be on that agenda as well. So, you know, I think it's something that we're definitely exploring. And we're obviously open to all the suggestions. Mainly, what we want to do, I think, is to make sure that the residents that we serve, and we also, you know, we're all elected by the residents, are getting the best service possible without any glitches, if you will, systems glitches. So this is an issue that we will be talking to all of the jurisdictions about. And it's something that we'll probably be even discussing in the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Thank you, Director Chang Crowley, for making that point. Yes, it is. It is all about the residents, right? And what in theory is best for them. Councilmember Mueller. And then, seeing no hint, so hopefully we'll be able to close out the conversation.
So I think it's great that Director Corrali, Councilmember Taylor are going to have a discussion, informal discussion. And I think it's a wonderful idea to talk to the community about what they might want to do with some portion of that $6 million. But I do very much hope President McLaughlin and the board will look at what it would look like to go ahead and have a vaccination delivery on demand to folks door to door with some portion of city support from that $6 million for that. If we build that logistical framework together, it seems to me we can make a strong case to go and get the vaccines in order to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Mueller. Okay, so let's move on to, let's close out. I think there's a number of sort of next step, action items across the board, these items. And again, I think a very valuable discussion. With that, we've got technically eight minutes left. But I wanted to move on and touch on, and make sure we got to Agenda Item C3, which is homeless encampments and the threat to community safety. Again, generic, broad topic, but with that, I'll call to the city part to open up public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Item C3, homeless encampments and the threat to community safety, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a cell phone or a landline, please press star nine. And our first public commenter will be Kim Novello.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. So I was, when I read the agenda item, I was a little surprised to see the, and the threat to community safety, because I am curious about that threat. And I'm curious if these people are a threat, and if we know that. So as you may have gathered by now, I like to take nature walks. And recently, I found myself walking along Alma, along the train tracks where the trees are, into the El Palo Alto Park on the Palo Alto side, and then along the San Francisco Creek. And I did happen to get a little nervous when I walked by. There was a tent and a bike. And there wasn't, it was behind one of the Palo Alto side parks. And I was just thinking, I've also heard about the triangle area where I think other homeless people are. And I'm, I was thinking that, you know, I think people that are on such hard times that they're homeless have found a space in nature because they need to be in nature. So I am curious whether, if these people are relocated, are they given the opportunity to find peace in nature? And are these people actually harmless? I actually, since hearing about, I think it's someone, either a commission or city council group that plans to go talk to homeless, who, I don't know if it's taken place yet. But I found myself actually, myself, talking to homeless people for the first time in my life. And, you know, I don't know that they're all dangerous. And I just wonder if they don't just need some nature. And I also noticed that I didn't, haven't yet even called anyone in Palo Alto to report the one tent with the bicycle that I saw. Because I just want to, you know, I just don't know who these people are and what their situation is. And I think that we should take that seriously and also take seriously that, I keep saying this, but we need nature, everyone. I think so many people have some level of mental health issue. And I would almost claim that 95% of everyone in Menlo Park, except for maybe the kids, have issues that we all need nature for. So please consider, you know, we don't know what these people's situations are, and just please consider that they're human beings and we all need help sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter will be Kevin Gallagher.
Hi, thank you. I was actually wondering if we would be able to reopen public comment at the end of the discussion. Kind of similarly to the previous caller, the, the title for this discussion made me a little nervous. But I, I don't want to make assumptions about what the intent or content of the discussion will be.
Mr. Mayor?
Please go, President.
I, I just want to point out that, that we need to wrap things up. We have a scheduled meeting that begins itself.
Okay, to, to totally, we, totally fair. So, so to, to, to answer your question, Mr. Gallagher, there, there won't be an opportunity to reopen it up. I, I don't think that there'll be an opportunity for much, much, much discussion here. But I do want to allow the city park to officially close public comment on this, this item if, if they're in other hands.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. We will conclude public comment following Mr. Gallagher's comment.
Okay, so I, again, I don't think there'll be, be much of an opportunity to discuss this. To discuss this substantively. But what I will say is that the, this title was not in any way an effort to sort of brand or categorize homeless people or homeless encampments as necessarily unsafe. But with a number of encampments, specifically some of those along the Bayfront, there have been instances of violence and even fires that have required emergency services. And so, so there have been threats to safety in connection with, with some of the, the homeless encampments in, in Menlo Park. And so I think that that's what that title was referring to. Again, not an effort to brand or categorize homelessness as itself a threat, or homeless people as somehow, as somehow threatening. And so I, I'll just, with that, we've got two minutes. And so I'll, I'll let President McLaughlin sort of provide comment and, and close out, and close out the meeting.
You know, I, I think you characterize this item very well. That, that last item regarding the homeless encampments, it wasn't to disparage or categorize any, any, any group. And anyone that has questions about what those threats to our firefighters may be, or some of the issues that we face in responding to calls for service in a triangle area, I would encourage them to contact Chief Chapel Homan directly. I, I thought this was very good, a very good discussion tonight on the issues that we covered. Thank you so much for, for hosting the meeting and doing such a marvelous job here, Mayor Combs. And I, we look forward to following up on, on the items that that, that we've discussed here tonight. And staff will have a lot to do in the next, in the coming weeks. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll just, just echo that. Thank, thank you, everyone, for, for, for participating. I do think it was, we covered a number of topics. And, and I, I think it was a very productive discussion of where there is, there are a number of items to, to, to follow up on. So, so thank you all. And, and, and everyone have, have, have a good evening.
Mayor Combs, before we do adjourn, I would like to see if Kevin did have a public comment for this item. So Kevin, if Kevin Gallagher, if you do have a comment on this item, please engage that hand feature now. And I do not see him re-raising his hand, so we can officially adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.